Twenty-nine and thirty, Lad Road. Economic Development Presentation. Town Planner Update. All Business, New Business, and Adjournment. Has everyone had a chance to review the minutes from the meeting of November 18th?
Yes.
Any corrections or changes? No.
None.
Can I have a show of hands to accept the minutes of November 18th as written?
I'll second the motion.
Oh, okay, you'll second it?
Yeah.
You'll first, second?
I'll make the motion.
You'll second it.
Okay. Now, everybody unanimous that we accept them?
One.
Thank you. Okay. A and R for twenty-nine and thirty, Lad Road. Gene, if you'd like to review that for us.
I thought it was twenty-nine and thirty-one.
It is.
It is on here, but not on here. It is. Twenty-nine and thirty-one, Lad Road.
Yes. So you have before you a plan to combine what's shown on the plan as Lot One and Lot Two into a proposed Lot A. Since the new lot will meet the requirements, I recommend you endorse the plan submitted.
Any questions?
No.
None.
Nothing? Okay. So we'll take a vote to approve the A and R for twenty-nine, thirty-one, Lad Road.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Now we'll vote. Unanimous. Thank you.
Could you sign that so he can take his mile line?
Sure. Now we're going to go to the Economic Development Director's update.
I love this for sure. I already got one earlier, but it's just fantastic. They did a great job. You know, I didn't notice that, but that's. It's really well laid out. It's just excellent job, and they did a good job.
There you go.
I would just be careful until that drives the signature, okay? But I'll hand it over.
No ads. It's just.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Terry, would you like to?
Sure.
Terry Masterson will present his annual State of the Town to us, the Economic Development Program.
I'm the clicker, sorry.
Oh, okay.
We'll start with the cover and the lovely sign that got, when did it come up? This summer?
Yes.
Everybody comments on it, how much they like it. Topics are an overview of our one-stop policy on assisting business, discuss consumer spending based on meals and hotel revenues. Did it, I try to do a business survey every year, and I incorporated that in this report. I may not have last year. So we sent the survey out to seventy-five Sturbridge businesses, and so far we've got twenty responses. So I've sent out a second email. I'd like to get more of a response. So what you're going to hear is based on, you know, those numbers. Inventory of Retail Tourism and Related Businesses. When we did the guide this year, we had fifty to sixty businesses in the former guide. There are now one hundred and twenty-five in this guide. So we really, you know, expanded the number of businesses in the guide, but it also told us how many tourism-related businesses there are in the town, which is very impressive. Attendance and Visitorship Data, Business of the Year Awards, Completed and Emerging Projects, and then Marketing Sturbridge in the Digital Age. This presentation will provide details on several data categories with quick summary points below. Hotel and Meals revenues are consistent and have grown strongly since COVID-19. The business survey results show positive outlooks for the present and the future. Sturbridge's retail base is diverse and well-occupied. We have low vacancies, and we have space seekers frequently on a regular basis. You could, if you wanted to have a two-sided coin, you could say we don't have enough space to some extent. Twenty-twenty has, twenty-twenty-five has good news coming with the emergence of a new theater. And OSV and Chris Tieri made an interesting comment at a meeting Gene and I were at where their goal for attendance for twenty-twenty-five or twenty-twenty-six is three hundred thousand because of the two-hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary of the country. And OSV's attendance has been about two hundred thousand year-over-year for the past several years. So that's a positive for us because the odds are they probably will reach some of those goals, and that'll be more people coming into the town, which is very good. Meals and Hotel Spending, I'll show you, remains very strong, but it may be plateauing. A new Sign Grant Program has been accessed by seven Sturbridge businesses. We'll talk about that. And the Chamber's Visitor Center is entering its second year, and according to the Chamber last week, has been welcoming hundreds of visitors. So that's a positive. Here's our emblem of working to help businesses in a one-stop manner to provide, whether it's counseling, linking them to our website, helping them find ways to promote themselves in some specific examples, and making sure that they can come to me first for any issue that they may have with the town to get resolved. Business Survey Results, some of them were as follows. How was twenty-twenty-four for your business? Two said great, six said good, four said break even, none said deficit. How have you fared since COVID-19? Five say better, six said they're back to pre-COVID, zero said they were struggling, and one said they were behind. This is interesting. Was twenty-twenty-four better or worse than twenty-twenty-three? Five said it was better, four said the same, and three said that twenty-twenty-three was better. Will twenty-twenty-five be a bear or a bullish year? Nobody said bullish, but six said positive, six said cautiously optimistic, and nobody was really sour on the coming year. This was an important question. I kind of abbreviated, and I had a lot of questions in the survey about this. Where do all the visitors come from? But the gist of it is that the town's customer base is everywhere. It's local, it's regional, it's national, it's snowbirds, it's migrants, it's the RV, it's all kinds of different constituencies that all come together. So nine said yes, three said more local. Are weddings a driver of economic activity? Four said yes, three said a fair amount, five said it was hard to measure. And is OSV a driver in terms of generating foot traffic? Three said it was strong, but you had four to four saying modest or hard to measure. And I think that's kind of the challenge that we have, is that many will go in and then they'll come out, and how do you kind of try to harness that? I had another question in there, which I should put in, is are the RV, because we have four-hundred-and-fifty RV pads, and that comes to like ninety thousand people a year at just fifty percent occupancy. Are they creating a trickle-down or a circular or generator? And the answers were hard to measure or not likely or not to be seen. So it may be that the RVers go in and have a good time, and then they head to the next destination, so. I asked the Business Survey Results for strengths and weaknesses, and some of them we've heard before. Strengths were lots of hotels, food and drink, the trails. OSV and Brimfield were listed. Central geographic location, OSV and Public House, and the Mill Yard deserves to be promoted because it has so many diverse attractions inside of it, whether that's entertainment or arts and crafts or food. And we are definitely going to, in the next edition of the guide, have sort of a separate page for the Mill Yard so that businesses that are within the Mill Yard will be on one or two pages as well as being in the guide, too. And that's going to be a goal we're going to have. Weaknesses are not much to do except for Old Sturbridge Village and the Trails, walkability, lack of specialty shops. The RV Park said that the RV, this is kind of funny, the RV visitors struggle with the I-90, I-84 bottlenecks. So I guess when they're trying to get here or leave here, they struggle with the same traffic patterns that we do. OSV has limited days and hours, there's low evening options, we don't have a core central downtown, and some people are aware of the Host Hotels mediocre condition. But I do want to say, and this is not in the presentation, and I'm going to make sure to put it in, is that I think Gene can agree with me. I think this year, they're drawing shows. They're drawing athletic events. They draw, you definitely see, and I go through the parking lot every morning, business entities like, you know, Town Fair Tire, you can tell if they're having an event or meeting because you can see all their T-shirts or their clothing on. So they get business events. We have funded probably five to seven events this year. There's several music concert purveyors that are now using it. So there is activity there, you know? And he has also made improvements to the rooms and other features of the property. Is that to say that it's where it should be? No, not, but it's, there's, there's activity going on. We have met, Gene and I and Robin met with the owner and the management team about two months ago and talked about what we do to help them and support them because we're giving grants to shows that come there that can demonstrate either foot traffic or hotel room occupancy. And we've also gone ahead and used STA money to purchase a year's membership with the regional tourism entity, Discover Central Massachusetts, with the goal of trying to connect the Host to the larger DCU Convention Center in Worcester, with the idea that that is a treasure trove of leads and requests for shows that may not fit DCU, but maybe they would fit at the Host because the Host is a little smaller than DCU. So they actually did meet with the leadership of Discover Central Massachusetts three or four weeks ago, and so the goal is to get them to leverage that membership and hopefully get some leads or tips on other groups that might be looking for shows or exhibits or business meetings. So hopefully they'll take advantage of that, but we're going to pay for their first year's membership to do that. Meal spending, we've gone past recovery from COVID, where we can say in twenty-twenty, COVID caused a twenty-seven percent decline in meal spending, and then it boomeranged back in twenty-twenty-one, going back from forty-six to sixty-five million, which was a forty-one percent increase. Then in twenty-twenty-two, it went up to seventy-four million, which was a thirteen percent increase. And then in twenty-twenty-three, it went up a little less, five percent to seventy-seven million. And although I don't have the end-of-the-year fall numbers yet, I'm anticipating that it'll come in at eighty-two million, eighty-point-two million, which is a three percent increase. So that's basically where it is. And one also has to factor in the higher price of food as well for some of these increases. So, but the numbers are holding, you know, to where they were. They went up in the spring, they went up a little bit in the winter, and then you could see in the summer it was the same exact twenty-one, twenty-one, twenty, and then nineteen in twenty-twenty-one. So it's, that might be that the high end of where we are with it, but it's just important for us to know as well. But we did come out of COVID as well, so that's where that is. Here I summarized it. Back in two thousand and seventeen and eighteen, meal spending averaged sixty-two million. Sales dropped thirty percent to forty-six. And I mentioned the point that sales had risen forty-one percent. Let's see, anything else? Oh, and another point we've made before is seasonal shifts are only twenty to thirty percent, so meal spending has some annualized consistency. When we see the hotel numbers, you can definitely see it falls off in winter and spring, and then it comes back up in the, in the, in the summer, um, summer and fall. Here with the hotel numbers, and again, I don't have the end of the year, and I won't have that till the end of January. Hotel spending fell fifty percent from seventeen million to eight million due to COVID. Then it came back up to fourteen million, then it came back up to nineteen, then up to twenty-one million, which is very good. And then this year, I think it's going to come in at twenty-one million nine if it's the same number as last fall, same for the quarter. But if you notice here in the summer, it declined fifteen percent, went from seven-point-four to six-point-four million. But here it went up, and here it stayed the same. So go to the next. Let's see here if I. Here I put in a lot of detail to say, interesting to say that hotel and meals tax revenues yield two million dollars in revenues to the town. That's on a thirty-eight million dollar budget. So that's five percent of basically non-property tax revenue that the hotels and the meals tax generates for the town. If not for that two million, it would come out of the property tax unless it came from increased state aid or other types of grants. So many towns can't boast that. And for a town that doesn't have a lot of smokestack-type industry, that's also a boon, where like Hadley is sitting, you know, with millions of square feet of retail space, where Amherst has no retail square footage, and their tax rates are almost double, you know, each. Let's see here. As I noted, hotel revenues declined thirteen percent for the third quarter of forty, twenty-twenty-four. Here's what I also added, and the average daily room rate from twenty-twenty-two to twenty-twenty-four is a hundred and twenty-three to a hundred and thirty-one dollars, which is not much of an increase if you look at it. So when you're measuring hotel, it's not only just the occupancy, you can really get into the weeds and say, well, what's the daily room rate? And that helps you understand what are, what are the hoteliers getting, and that drives the hotel tax. If you have, if you have a really great room rate, you're going to get a lot of hotel tax revenue because it's thirteen percent of that. But here also, room demand for twenty-twenty-two was a hundred and eighty-six thousand rooms. So for, let's see here, and for, how did I jumble this up here? So for twenty-twenty-three, it was two hundred thousand, four hundred and six rooms, and for, as of third quarter twenty-four, we're at two hundred and six thousand rooms again. So you can see that, I don't know that twenty-twenty-four hotel room demand or occupancy is going to go up that much, and that's consistent with the revenue numbers. So it's, it's another point along with the meals tax to say, well, maybe this is the ceiling, you know? This is your, your, your growth, you know, how far up you can go. This is a screen, we've mentioned this before, the Host sold in twenty-twenty for four million. It was purchased for fifteen million way back in two thousand and five. And then in twenty-twenty-three, just at the end, La Quinta sold, was purchased for three-point-eight million, and it had originally been purchased for one-point-two million in two thousand and fifteen. But it's two hotel properties that sold recently, and now the Blackington Building is on the market, so we'll see where that goes. It's interesting to note that there are one hundred and twenty-five businesses in and adjacent to Sturbridge. I always love going over this list. There's four bakery and dessert makers, four coffee and tea, thirty-two restaurants, eateries, and markets, three orchards, three wineries, six brew pubs, three wedding venues, eleven hotels and motels, four RV parks, thirty-one specialty shops, and twenty-five health, wellness, and spa and fitness businesses. Actually, the hotel number might be, yeah, I have hotel RV, it's fifteen because I include the three RVs. So go to, go to the next screen. Here is a breakdown by percentage. Food and beverage is forty-two percent, hotel is eleven, retail is twenty-five, health and wellness is twenty, and event venues is two percent. Here's visitor and attendance, which is hard to measure, so these are numbers that we kind of measure by, Sturbridge Hotels is taking all the total hotel rooms and maybe trying to apply a fifty percent occupancy, being very conservative, and so that comes up with a hundred thousand people. And that's assuming one-point-five person per room. RV Parks is ninety thousand. That is also a very conservative number, but it's taking all four-hundred-and-fifty RV pads and assuming fifty percent occupancy from April to October or May to October. I don't use it all twelve months because that's not the full season. Old Sturbridge Village, I have it two hundred thousand, but with twenty-twenty-six and twenty-twenty-five, it may go up to three hundred thousand, we'll see. It stated that the Brimfield Antique Shows attract fifty thousand people. That's what their promoters say. And wedding estimates, is it forty thousand multiplying three to four hundred times, I think, two hundred people or a hundred and fifty people? And in this Business West article that you have in front of you, I think Mike Harrington refers to how many weddings they'll, they'll do every year. So it's, it, if you add the weddings that he's doing and Table Three is doing and the Host is doing, it's probably three to five hundred a year. So it is a significant, you know, economic magnet for the town in terms of bringing hotel occupancy, food consumption, meals tax, and the other employment that comes along with it. We did have had a Business of the Year Award Program, and every year I do it, I always come away more and more impressed with it because it's something that Brian Amity had talked about. We stopped doing it during COVID and then resumed. So we did it in twenty-twenty-two, and the winners were Whoopi Doop Cupcakes, The Bird Store and more, Public House and OSV. The twenty-twenty-three winners were Teddy G's, who's there, Tootie Quanti, who's there, Sturbridge RV Park, that's Kim Prokan, the manager, and then Old Sturbridge Village, which was represented by this person. And the program has tremendous value because it not only offers publicity for all local businesses, it generates hundreds of voters, which is public participation. And the winning businesses are extremely appreciative of the award. They really, really are. It really gives them a lot of pride and satisfaction. So it's really, every year I do it, I come away thinking it's really a worthwhile effort. They all receive a thousand-dollar marketing grant, which is open-ended. They can spend it pretty freely any way they want on marketing and advertising. And then we give them a two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar membership in the regional tourism agency, Discover Central Massachusetts, which we have done with the Host this year, even though they didn't win the Business of the Year Award Program, we're still making sure that they're in touch with them. So that's, that's screen. Twenty-twenty-four winners this summer were the same, where Deep Roots Distillery was a dufecta. They won Best Place to Eat, and then their companion business, The Axe Throwing, was the best, best place to have fun. Tootie Quanti also is a multiple winner. They were best for shopping. And the best place to stay was Comfort Inn, which is a very, very nice hotel. So we had a good turnout. We had over seven hundred votes for the twenty-twenty-four election, so that's good. Completed and Emerging Projects, we've completed the tour guide with the map and the twenty, one hundred and twenty-five businesses that we have located there. The map is reverse index, so somebody can look up eateries or wineries or weddings and then go to the map to see where that business is located. We're happy with that. The Tourism Chamber Visitor Center is now entering its second year, and we're very happy that this sits right off of I-84, right on the road into the Lead Mine Trail, and also at the front door of the Pine Lake RV, and just down the road from Thousand Trails. So this has been a big win for us. That's good, great. This is a panel from, also from last year, trying to describe the 501 Main Street Project, which is, which is the idea of leveraging the new parking lot, and I have a photograph of that coming up next, leveraging the new parking lot at 501 Main Street and connecting that to the Riverlands Trail, which the Trails people are working on. And then from there, someone could park on Main Street, park on Route Twenty, and go take advantage of the Trails or go all the way down to OSV. And I think that's going to be a real good positive for the whole Route Twenty corridor. Next. Here's a photo I took of, of the lot, which looks beautiful. That's where that is. We had a, our town administrator, Robin Grimm, allowed, allowed us to allocate thirty-six thousand dollars in ARPA money for a Sign Grant Program, and so we've been advertising that. The response has been slow, but now all of a sudden, we've had seven, seven applicants, which we're very happy about. And the, and the awardees include Rapsgallion, Trail Dusters, the new eatery down the road, Twiddle Dees, which is a local resident who's a business owner, Sturbridge Coffee House, Old Sturbridge Village is taking advantage of the program, Angelina's a new business and Evolve Salon and Suites. And because there has been interest in this, and also it could be a nice amenity to offer an incoming business, when we meet, when the STA meets next week, I'm going to try to suggest if we could think about allocating some of our funding and have an ongoing Sign Grant Program and see where it goes. If it, you know, gets eaten up, then that might be a good problem to have, and if it doesn't, at least it's there to give a business the same. I don't know how we could, what the funding level will be. The current funding is we pay fifty percent of assigns cost up to twenty-five hundred dollars. And so if a sign costs more than five, then they'll have to pay that, but we will pay fifty percent up to twenty-five hundred. So maybe we'll try and see how that works out. Maybe we fund a little less, but anyway. But I think to carry on the program as a stand-along would be a good thing. One of our next goals is to create a rack card, and it will hopefully be something similar to what the tour guide is. A rack card has some advantages. It's not going to be expensive to print it. It's cheaper than a guide. It's easier to mail. But the key for me is that we can place it in a lot of major retail areas, such as the Salem Visitor Center or the Lee Retail Outlet. So that's, to me, and the guide is obviously something that presents the town in a very substantive way for someone that really knows they're coming here and they really want to know what's available. They're sitting in a hotel room, they're located here, what's available. It's designed to steer them to the website. The rack card can be a good way of putting out more thousands of them in a more inexpensive way and still get that draw in. So the goal is to have the rack card and see how, how that works out. This is the Cambridge Rack Card, which is really nice. It's sort of a tri-fold, and our Sarah Martin at Break the Ice who works in it, she likes it, so we may be trying to model after something like that as opposed to some of the just one, two-sided ones. Also, it's important, CTM is a company that has brochure racks all across the Northeast for, for decades. They're, they're the IBM of the business, if you will. And I, they're known to be pretty pricey, so their representative actually stopped by two or three weeks ago and had a lovely conversation with her. She's made a proposal, which I'll pass to the Tourism Board, to see how they feel about that. So we might go that way and see if that has any value, but it's another way of distributing I just took this picture of the Cinemagic Space. I think this is going to be really exciting for the town. As many know, renovations and upgrades are underway at the former Cinemagic Theater at the Hobbs Brook Shopping Complex to create a new multi-screen luxury theater. Many residents and visitors are eager to see theaters return to Sturbridge. This will be a real asset to support our hotels, conference center guests, conferees, as well as residents. So I, and also might address some of the concerns in the survey about what can I do at night, you know? This might be a, a good way, you know, if someone's here for an overnight show or exhibit or business meeting, it's going to have to have, this could be a really great thing. Promoting Sturbridge in the digital age, we've done very, very well with Break the Ice Media. They manage the website, they manage the Instagram platform and the Facebook platform, and they continue to do coordinated messaging off of those three places. And if, if a new business comes into town, I refer them to get a promotional post through our website and Facebook and Instagram. If there's events, they promote that. If there's events, they promote that as well. You have their report, that's where all the detail is, as to how many thousands of people they're reaching with this, you know, it's an enormous amount of people that they're doing, you know, on a monthly basis throughout the year. So we're very well served by what they do. So that's, that's where we are.
That's it. No more slides?
No more slides. Yeah. Thanks for coming.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
And you also have, as I mentioned, the Business West article, which came out last week.
Can I have a copy of that?
What?
Thanks.
I love your brochure a lot.
I totally agree.
Yeah.
Talking about Wally about that earlier, well, they were signing things. This is just super well-designed, super thorough, super well-laid out. I just love it.
Thank you.
Yeah. In the Chamber Conference down, down the street there, I remember, I remember the road they've said, they're not hidden any longer, I mean, they are able to find people. I mean, is there a sign on I-84 showing where the information center is? You know, they should put one up there.
There are, as you approach the exit, there are several what they call Tourism Service signs and Historic Location signs. And the Chamber is working with DOT to get a sign that points out that there's a visitor center right off of the exit.
Yeah, that'd be nice. I don't think we're seeing anything there that would be one way to get people off, you know, off the highway instead of, if they're in the area, stop there, but if they don't know whether they're there. Very nicely done.
Sounds like quite a few people are finding it pretty well. Hundreds of people so far. It's pretty awesome.
I think so too, yeah. I'm glad they came up with the idea, and then as the STA, two years ago, funded $10,000 of the renovations. And it was all precipitated by the Chamber's present locate, or area location on Hall Road was sort of foreclosed because OFS had to, you know, not allow the building to be occupied anymore. So something good came of, you know, that, that, that situation by having them land here. Yeah, definitely.
So the business survey that you did, you had about 20 respondents so far? As you get more in, what's the best way for me to find out if those numbers that we saw changed? Are you doing like quarterly updates at another meeting, or?
I'm going to, to continue to try to push to get some more responses. The, the survey kind of lets me know who's replied.
Yep.
So there's some key stakeholders I still would like to get some input from them.
Busy this time of year, right?
So once I've gotten what I think is a good sample, then, then I can say, okay, this is finished and complete.
Because I saw some of those responses, like, oh, there's not enough specialty shops. And then I saw a slide that said, we have 31 specialty shops. That's a lot of specialty shops. So maybe it's, we just don't have a lot of respondents, and those numbers are going to change. Obviously, I'm sure we all think there could be more advertising to promote these specialty shops and everything else that's wonderful about this town. But that was one thing that jumped out to me was, there seems to be a disconnect between the survey results. Because I looked at all those, like, opportunities for improvement on the right-hand side of the slide, and I was like, I feel like we have a lot to do. We've got Axe Throwing, they just won an award last year. We got a movie theater that's coming to town, like...
If you want, I can send you the link to Survey Planet, and I'll give you my login, and you can go in and look at... No, I'm serious. I mean, that...
Very generous of you. I was just curious, you know, as more numbers came in...
No, because there's far more, the reason why I'm saying is because there's far more, like, strength...
You have a lot of data about that, yeah.
Yeah, there's a lot of comments about the town.
Yeah.
That, that I didn't put in there because it would just be too much. But, but to also answer your question, you're right, because when you send it to 75 people, it literally is, this one's only going to see this, and this one's only going to see that. Where like, Public House can speak to a lot of what's going on in the town, but maybe the RV manager is only going to see this much.
Everybody's got their own perspective.
Yes, so that's where you might get this, well, there's not this, or there's not that.
You only have 20 respondents, maybe you get some skew in a direction, so.
Yeah.
I just thought it was very interesting.
Yeah, and I think when, when you have more results, we could probably do an extract report to provide to the board as well with, you know, updated survey results.
What's a good, out of 75, what's a good representation?
I have no idea.
Yeah.
Honestly.
Usually a third or less.
Third or less, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, because, so think about it, we did a townwide survey for the Open Space Forum tomorrow night, and we had just over 4% of the population took the survey. So considering, we mailed it to every single household, and it was also available on the web. We filtered out, we had people put, if they lived in Sturbridge, so that we could filter the ones that weren't. So, yeah, Sue's right, if you can get even a quarter or a third a year, probably.
Marketing is a very much time-related sort of a thing. I used to work for a business that, that's what we did. And the difference between a poor and a good response can be one week.
Yeah.
The time that you send it out and the time that it gets returned. If you drop it at a certain time of year, you have poor response. If you drop it, and, you know, it's like if you're dropping marketing for like this in maybe January, you'll get a certain amount of interest from people doing long-term planning. You drop it in April, this is what people are thinking about their vacations, and of course, that depends on the scope of exposure that you get, you know, because people are going to make long-term plans, they're going to be probably more in the regional area than the local area. So it does, it does really matter. A quick question, you said that was 75 surveys you sent out?
Yes, yes. 75, in other words, I took the Survey Planet and the questions, emailed them to 75 stakeholders in the town.
Now, why only 75 out of, you, you noted 125, but I wasn't sure if that included our retail base?
It does.
It does. So it does include big box stores and the like?
Not the big box, but all the local ones.
Okay, because that's unfairly major draw in this town, is the big box stores. And I know we're trying to prop up local businesses, but they are part of that landscape. And when talking about like, oh, you know, what, how much influence, say, RVers make, when you talk about 50% occupancy, I dare say that some of those campgrounds actually have a much higher occupancy rate in the summertime because their business model is selling seasonals. So they may be 80, 90%, and I would hope they are, because there's a very expensive investment to have a camp, modern campground. I live on a street where we get traffic from a certain campground nearby, and you do see their, their vehicles up and down all day. They're going to the store, they're going someplace.
Okay, that's good to hear.
And sometimes we get even time to watch them go by because of our traffic as well.
Were the parade, did they ever throw you candy?
The parade during Thanksgiving was five hours each every day.
Quite delightful.
Yeah.
At a fall. So you can imagine they get plenty of exposure at the local center as well, because they get to go buy at four miles an hour.
Yeah.
Get you a little billboard at the end of your street there. I got one last question for you. I saw a slide that you had where you listed the number of types of businesses that we had, and then the next slide was like the percent breakdown of that, and you were like, hotels is like 4% or 5% or something like that. But I was wondering, hotels, they have a lot of push-through and a relatively high per-person cost. I wondered, do you ever look at that for the dollars instead of the per each? Like, we have X number of restaurants and X number of hotels. So it looks like we have super heavy in restaurants, but the dollar amount for each might be kind of the same? I don't know. Did we ever look at that?
When you say dollars, you mean tax revenue, or?
How much comes from restaurants? How come, how much comes from retail? How much comes from hotels?
In terms of the tax revenue? You get $650,000 a year in meals tax, and maybe a million four in hotel tax. Because the meals tax is just...
About twice in hotel.
Yes, because, because...
Very interesting.
The meals taxes, you get, this is where the state does very well by us. And so the meals tax is 7%. So the state gets 6 and 1/4, and you get 3/4 of 1%. And the hotel tax is a little more equitable, it's 13%. You get 6, and Beacon Hill gets 5.75.
Well, right off the bat, 7%, 13% are almost 2X. So when you say it's like 600 and 1.4 is about 2X, but the, the tax rate is about twice, that starts to make more sense in my head. This is just interesting. I was curious if we had looked at the divide. You got those numbers around the top of your head. You're great. I love it.
Yeah, but, so you, but you get my point that, that...
Oh, yeah.
We get a bigger chunk of that hotel dollar than we do of the dinner plate.
100%.
You know? And one could make the argument, you know, in a perfect world, we should get more of the meals of that dinner plate. If you can split the hotel, they should split, maybe they should split the, the dinner plate too, but anyway, but yeah.
Find the right person to yell at, I'll come help you with that. But thank you very much for your time and answering my questions.
Yeah, no, it's a pleasure. Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you, Chair. Any other questions?
I'm all set. Thank you.
Okay, Town Planner update.
So just a few little things. So we do have a new restaurant moving into the former Stonewall Grill, F-538 Main Street, Angelina's. She was one of the sign grant recipients. And then a photography studio moving into the Lake Road Living space. That's the former Country Curtains, Lake Road Living and Hydrangea Home combined. They're in the larger side, so it left the small side open. So we have a photography studio.
Nice.
Eventually moving in there. And she's going to do her studio, but also classes for other professional photographers. I said, no Photography 101? She said, well, maybe I could add it if there's an interest. So I thought that was good. I didn't even know it was coming available, and it was gone before we even knew it, so...
Just heard, there's a lack of space.
Exactly. And then upcoming meeting dates, January 13th. We are canceling December 23rd, I should start with. And January 13th, I thought we would have the tree removal for National Grid. They did not meet the deadline. The newspaper moved up the deadlines for the advertising around the holidays, so unfortunately, we weren't able to get them on. So they'll be on for January 27th, but we will do the zoning bylaw amendments and convenient MD on the 13th. And the Open Space and Recreation Plan public forum is tomorrow night at Town Hall. I encourage you all to come. Get the word out to your friends. Even if people haven't RSVP'd, they're still welcome, so we'd love to see them there. That's it. Happy holidays, everyone.
Thank you.
Any old or new business from anyone? Anyone have a word? No? Okay, so I guess we'll wish each other and the townspeople a Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
I'll support that motion.
Yeah. And we'll look for an adjournment.
I'll second it.
And everybody will...
Some say we all.
Unanimously.